To the flag, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice Welcome to the August 27, 17 Planning Board Meeting in town of Phillips Town. First on the agenda is public hearing, Manitowoc Properties LLC, 1656 Route 9D, Cold Spring. Sorry, jumped a gun. Back up one more. Yeah, do the roll call, please.
Dennis Jagnan.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here.
Neil Telman.
Here.
Andy Moranty.
Here.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
David Hardy.
Minutes for the July 20 meeting. Does anybody have any additions, deletions, corrections? No? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 20. Second? All in favor? All right, thank you.
I abstained because I wasn't here.
Okay, so noted. Public hearing, Manitowoc Properties.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself as I've done in the past.
Neil Zuckerman is recused.
The Phillips Town Planning Board for the town of Phillips Town, New York will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 17, 2017, starting at 7:30 PM at the old VFW Hall, 34 Kemble Avenue in Cold Spring, New York to consider the following application. Manitowoc Properties LLC, 1656 Route 9D, Cold Spring, tax map number 49.6-2-1. The application represents a site plan review of a development proposal which involves a 5.269 acre parcel in the HM zoning district and includes a new 2,600 square foot structure and an addition of 770 square feet to the existing building. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application plat map and other related material may be seen in the office of the planning board at the Phillips Town Hall, dated at Phillips Town, New York, the 7th day of August, 2017. Anthony Moranty, Chairman.
The representative of the applicant?
Yes, William Beatty and Watson, representing the applicant with Tim Rasek, the architect for the project. Right behind me. I think public notice pretty much said it all. We have a little over a five acre parcel of land. Those of you who may not have been here or know about it is the former Plumbush Restaurant was converted a couple of years ago into the Manitowoc School. Their program was to eventually grow into, from the 60 students, to grow to probably 120. They've been successful in that and at this point, they need some extra space. You recall that earlier we were in with a much larger additional building which met with some resistance from the neighbors and some resistance from the planning board. That was rethought. The building was made smaller. It was moved further from the neighbor's property line. It was moved further north so that it wouldn't block the neighbor's view. So that's the 2,600 square foot building. It's located to the southeast of the main building and behind it, actually alongside of it, depending how you look at it, the existing building will be extruded for another 700 square feet of additional space going out towards the east. In addition, there will be, this new plan provides a couple of extra parking spaces to make up the difference that's required for the building and we anticipate that the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan will require some additional work, so we've laid out a spot for that. We've reconfigured the, what is really the overflow parking and what used to be the parking field for the restaurant so that we have an overflow lot and sort of a secondary overflow lot which will be grass field but generally not parked in. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Anything from the board at this time? Ron? Oh, Kim?
So, I'll let Ron go and then I'll say something.
My office has issued comments both relative to the recent sidewalk of the board that the applicant should respond to in some form. There's also a technical memorandum from the July meeting that warrants some responses as well. So I don't think we've seen any new submittals since then. And there's one last statutory requirement and that's referral to county planning, which the board has not yet done. And that will necessitate a 30-day comment period, so that should move without delay.
So, my question is about the additional parking spaces. I already see people parking in the overflow parking. Is it really necessary to make more impervious surface there?
I believe so, yes. I believe we needed a couple of extra spaces in there. I can check that. Would be happy to take them out if I'm wrong.
It just, you know, it just seems like concentrating parking and, you know, adding more parking when you have that big field over there already, you know, it just seems a little...
We could certainly look into that.
Anyone else? Well, one of the things we tried to do is not create more impervious surface than necessary, so see where Kim's coming from on that. Anyone else? Okay, open it to the public?
I do know, that's why, that's why we, you know, I know we need this parking space at some, based on the extremes, and that's why we decided to make that part grass as opposed to, as opposed to a gravel field. So at least we'll have some semblance of green there.
When they have ceremonies such as graduations or whatever, you know, I'm not familiar with the level of these children, how far up they go and what ceremonies they have. Do you have an overflow parking?
Yeah, that's what that's basically for.
And that will take care of it?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Open it to the audience? No comments? I move to close public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? All right. Ron, you said that we need to refer to county, that's 30 days before I get a resolution.
That's right. And upon the close of the public hearing, which was just accomplished, you have 62 days in which to act on the application. So that should be sufficient time for the applicant to provide revised plans and respond to anything the board might have.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to refer to county planning.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you.
I'm asking Mr. Gaynor to prepare a resolution for consideration September's meeting. I'm sure we'll have the county planning board by that time.
All right. Motion to ask the planner to prepare a resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Ron, we need a neg deck.
Again, that can all await the preparation of the resolutions.
Okay. Okay, we're going to jiggle the agenda around a little bit. Got to note that Neil has returned. The last item on the agenda is return of escrow. I just want to do that and get it out of the way. Ron, are we aware of any expenses by Delavalle that's not covered?
No, I'm not aware of any involvement from my office or some extended period.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to return the escrow of Jared Delavalle.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. And again, we're going to, another adjustment, we're going to hold Hudson Highlands to the end. We have a couple here. Secret resolution and negative deck? Ron?
Yeah, the, as the board directed last month, I prepared draft negative secret declarations for your review as well as a draft approval resolution. I believe it addresses all standard requirements of the board.
Any further comment? Need a motion for the secret negative declaration?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to ask Ron to prepare a resolution?
No, no, you have a resolution for the...
Site plan.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, let me see that.
You have them both.
Okay. Yeah, I think I do have them both. There we go. Sorry?
Site plan approval. Yeah, should have that.
Paperwork.
Right.
We need a resolution for the negative declaration?
That's what we do.
See if he needs those.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, right?
Let's see, yeah. Isn't that, this is the date? Okay.
Can you pass that to the chair just so we see it?
He's got it.
Yeah, got it, I'm here.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's say we didn't do this one yet. Okay, entertain a motion?
For?
A neg deck?
For.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have a resolution from our planner. Ron, you want any comment on that?
No, as I said, it's a conditional approval for site plan. It addresses the standard conditions of the board and concerns that I know you've raised in the past. So I believe it's ready for action.
Okay. Motion to approve resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Christopher Buck, 1657 Route 9D, Cold Spring.
Anything for him?
No? Oh, well, we have, you don't have this, we got this.
I think we have a report from Ron about your sidewalk and otherwise it's already been referred to the zoning board. Really can't come up, pick up, other than going with Ron's report. There's really nothing...
The only other matter to address again is a referral to Putnam County Planning.
Correct.
And that'd be appropriate to do now even though he's appearing before the ZBA.
Do you want to give any comments on this, on your report?
I provided them just to, for documentation for the board's records. I believe the applicant likewise has a copy. If anything that needs response, he'll address that as he returns from the ZBA.
Okay. We need a resolution to, a motion to forward this to Putnam County Planning?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. Hey. Ah, let's see, Martin McHugh. Computers are going to eliminate paper, right? Ben?
This subdivision was before you. It's really a lot line adjustment, technically a subdivision because the amount of land that's being moved from one lot to another. We were ineligible for approval because we were shortening the already shortened, too short frontage on the larger lot. The larger lot's frontage has a little bit, about 22 feet here on the western portion of the east mountain of Lake Surprise Road. The rest of its frontage is on the extreme opposite end and it's divided by a couple of thousand feet between the two pieces of frontage. So, but nonetheless, the lot line adjustment which moves from this green line on the west, this western green line over to the eastern green line, cut off that frontage thus making the lot more non-conforming. You found that we were ineligible for a consideration. You referred us to the zoning board. We did make the application and we were granted the variance for the even less frontage. It's still substantial. It's well over 100 feet. I forget the exact number. But anyway, we're back here. We're seeking to have a public hearing scheduled so we can, for the September meeting and hopefully acted upon in the September meeting. There's no physical, this does not trigger anything physical. What it is, as I mentioned when we first were here, is that this larger piece, I think it's 67 acres, was inherited by four siblings. One of the siblings lives on Lot 1. Three of the siblings live out of town and want to sell the land. First sibling wants to increase the size of her land so take her share out of the larger parcel. So they've come up with an agreed amount of land and this lot line adjustment map reflects that change. So this piece coming out of the large piece, larger piece will be added to Mary McHugh's parcel, making it larger, more nearly conforming. And the remainder of the land will, she'll get out of the, her title will come out of that remaining land and the other siblings will have, will have the land on the market and they may even have it on the market. And they will sell it and move on.
So, just a question. So you've, I'm, you said that it was, that the ZBA gave them a variance because that by adding that piece, it made it more, it cut that corner off.
This little bit of frontage for this big piece is going to be cut off and become frontage for this piece.
So where's the, so...
So when we added our frontage, we had 20 feet here and 100, I'm going to say 150 feet here.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we could have made a little tiny strip of land up this very steep drop down at this point of, down to the creek. And we could, we could have done that, but it just didn't make any sense to have that long leg of land. It couldn't be used for a driveway. It couldn't be used for anything.
Yeah. I guess I'm having a hard time understanding. So this drawing you have on the side is an enlargement of that smaller piece?
Yes, I'm sorry. These are enlarges. Yeah, this is actually the frontage. I was pointing in the wrong place. This little bit of frontage here is enlarged over here.
Okay. And how long is that?
I'll have to add it up.
I thought he said that was...
37 and 7, 36, it's 50 and... Covered it up with that big red stripe, so it's about 160, 170 feet, I think.
Ryan, you need your little slider.
Yeah.
Haven't used in years.
So it's, it's a fair amount of frontage. Oh, you know what, Mike?
There you go. What's required?
Existing?
Yeah. 175 is now 175. It will be 153.
57.
157?
And what's the requirement per lot of frontage?
Pardon me?
What's the requirement for frontage?
253.
So this, so that's not enough? That's going to be, that amount of frontage is not enough for this to be a...
That lot actually becomes more non-conforming because of it, but because we have the variance, it's not an issue.
And the variance is for this second lot, not for the first lot?
Right. For the second lot, to have less frontage is required. This lot has all of this blue and it'll have 22 more, so it's way over.
So this lot, when they sell it and they bring it back to us to want to build there, it's going to have to get another variance?
No.
No.
Not for that.
Not for frontage.
There shouldn't be any reason for them to come back to you for a variance. The variance goes with the land, not with the faction.
My concern, I mean, you know, they've given them the variance, so that's, but my concern is that we create a situation for ourselves that we have to resolve later because we have now a piece of land that doesn't have enough frontage by the zoning. And that's up to the ZBA, but it's just something we should be mindful of.
Sorry, what's our... That's a ZBA issue. What's, your point is that...
Just, you know, it's going to come back to us and we're going to look at it and say, oh, look at this short frontage here that's less than what we're supposed to have.
Are you proposing that we then weigh in with the ZBA about that?
Not necessarily. I'm just pointing it out as a, you know, something that, you know, when these things come before us, you know, the future...
Well, you have to keep in mind as a practical matter that that, the practical frontage of this lot is not changing. What's changing, the legal frontage is changing by 22 feet here, as I pointed out, I think on more than one occasion and just a few moments ago, when you step off of the road at this point, you're, you go a very few feet before you're going on hand-to-hand stuff to go down. You're aiming yourself at trees to get down to that creek without falling into it.
But right now, this is a lot with one house on it, right? In the future...
No house on it.
No houses.
There's no house.
That house, that there. This is all part of one lot, correct? Or is that, that's, so this big lot has no houses on it?
The big lot has no houses. The small lot has one house. Small lot is this sort of triangular shaped piece. It is going to get bigger. So when I said it's going to be less non-conforming, it's because it's going to have area closer to what's required.
But this big lot is going to, the rest of the lot is going to come back to us as something, they're going to sell it and it's going to come back to us as something somebody wants to build on.
It might.
It probably will. You know, so it's just something to point out, just something we have to think about going forward as we carve things up over time that, you know, I just want to point it out.
Yeah, I mean, again, is there anything we could be doing about this or not? I mean, it sounds like this is not...
The reality is that, that limited, the frontage that's showing in red on that plan is the only practical way to enter that large piece. Whether the ZBA acted or not, that would be the only frontage to enter. And at this point, the ZBA action has been taken.
So I'm just, we're always, just what we have to think about.
I have a question about the balance of that property once it's added to the small Y. Is that subdivisible?
It would be subdivisible under perhaps the open development area regulations where a private road. It not, and that's the only way I can think of to do it because, one, I don't think grades will support much more than a private road. And secondly, it doesn't have enough frontage, it doesn't have enough frontage for one lot, so it's certainly not going to have enough frontage for two.
Well, it's getting back to Kim's concern, so...
Yeah, that's, that goes with the land that...
Neil? Neil? Peter? Any comments, Ron?
No.
Yeah? Any reason not to set up a public hearing? We need to make referrals?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
My only ask is that we, I think this is technically not the most obvious thing to understand, so just if you wouldn't mind when we do the public hearing, just to, let's go at it stepwise. Not that you don't do that, but it just seems like it's not an obvious, simple, it's straightforward, I think, in what you're asking, but it's a little complicated to understand that.
You want me to explain to you?
No, no, I think I get it close enough for me. I'm talking about for the public hearing to make sure anyone does come.
Yeah, fine, be happy to do that. I think it does need referral to county because we're within 500 feet of a park.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that referral should be accomplished.
Okay. Motion to refer to county planning?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So have a public hearing for September? Motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Boy, recycling guys are not going to be happy with me this week. Recycling guys. Okay. Hudson Highland Reserve, Route 9 and Horton Road. Continued review including full EAF and revised preliminary drawings. Any comments, Ron?
Yeah, the board should have a memorandum from my office. Actually encompasses a joint review accomplished of the yield plan that was recently submitted by the applicant for conformance with, for lot count purposes for this project. As the board will recall, there's been significant effort performed on the review of the density formula, lot count calculation that the applicant has been relying on. That was subject to a significant review earlier in the year. There's some slight discrepancies between my office and the applicant as to the outcome of that density formula, but they're very similar. Notwithstanding that, for the interest of complying with the regulations and the concern the board have, had over the significant environmental constraints on the property which are illustrated on these plans, the board wanted to have the applicant provide a yield plan just so we could understand whether the density formula did represent a reasonable number of lots for the overall project. And that's why this later plan came in. It's been subject to review by both AKRF and my office. The memorandum you have in front of you summarizes just the, an outline of the code requirements that apply to the development of the yield plan, presentation of the significant issues that we identified in our review of the plan, and basically our findings that the yield plan provides a regional base, a reasonable basis for the board to accept the density that's been presented on the density formula. This plan, the yield plan itself, represents 27 lots. There's a, there's a concern over at least a few of the lots that we find questionable, but essentially we would still come up with a lot count of 24, 25 lots from their yield plan, which is very similar to what the formula has provided. On my basis, I had established a lot count of either 22 lots if we ignored the M-zone property, or 24 lots if that's permitted to be included. Calculations by the applicant had indicated 25 lots, so the yield plan itself is in the same range, and so we believe it's reasonable to accept and let the applicant move on with the issue of providing the significant detail that you're seeking in Part III of the EAF.
Question on the M-zone. Where do we stand on that?
Petition has been made to the plant, to the town board to change the zoning. It's, your attorney has advised the town board that it must act in concert with you since it's all part of one action, so they won't be able to act on the petition until the secret loop is closed. We did make a presentation to the board and they seemed to... We did make a presentation to the board, and they seemed to be receptive, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't characterize as anxious or anything, but they seemed like they will give it serious consideration, and that's where we are.
Thank you. Now, for the applicant to go forward and complete the EAF Part Three, do we need to send direct, give them direction to do this?
No, I believe you did that at the prior meeting, I think in July meeting, you made a review of the revised EAF Part Two that AKRF had provided to you based on the guidance received at the work session that was adopted at the July meeting and was referred back to the applicant. So he now has his homework to do, to provide necessary detail in a Part Three statements for anything that the board has raised in that Part Two review. And I presume that's ongoing.
That's ongoing.
Any comment from the applicants?
I invite you to nothing more to move forward on until you see the submittal of Part Three materials, which, again, will be subject to thorough review by AKRF and my office.
Okay.
If I may, Rick O'Rourke, on behalf of the applicant, obviously, the, we concur with what Ron has said in terms of process here. The issue that was before the board was the yield plan, and obviously, that was now what we addressed and your consultants have addressed, so I think where we proceed from here, having dealt with that issue and addressed it, it is preparation of the Part Three, which we now know in a better sense of precisely what the application is, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Ron, where we are with the SECOR process is where? Just for me, just recap quickly, we are, there were?
Again, the applicant had previous?
They're working on a response to the Part Three of the EAF.
Applicant had provided Part One some time ago, which clearly is the applicant's document. You had reviewed Part Two, you had a work session on the review of that Part Two EAF. That was subject to some revision internally by AKRF, which was submitted to you, the revised documents. That revised document was finally accepted by the board at the July meeting, and then referred back to the applicant to seek responses for any issues that were raised in Part Two that warranted further review.
Okay, so you're working on Part Three?
We're working on Part Three.
Okay, so where are we with the details about the equestrian, I always, for me, it's the equestrian center. Are we lacking anything about septic, or?
We have commissioned a manure management plan that will be attached to Part Three.
Okay.
Yeah, those questions were raised in the Part Two statement that warranted the middle of further detail in Part Three, and that's what the applicant is proceeding with, on that and many other issues.
Part of your Part Three response?
Yes.
So the initial question?
Significant portion of it.
We don't have, we haven't asked any specific questions about the nature of the equestrian center, we've asked just a general description? Is that right, or?
Well, you've asked some particular questions about the adequacy of the site for the number of horses, you've asked the manure management plan, the paddock areas, and like I say, we have, we have somebody working on the manure management plan, and we're working on it.
And trails.
Pardon me?
Talking about the trails.
I think for, I think at this point, the trails, if we're gonna have the trails, we're going to, and we haven't decided that, we're gonna route them such that we don't have to get involved with the wetlands.
But it's, there will still be disturbance, it's still steep slopes and disturbance. Wetlands or no wetlands, so that, doesn't that come under something we have to be concerned about?
Yeah, I, if we avoid the wetlands, there won't be any disturbance in the wetlands. If you're talking about disturbance other places?
Stormwater.
Disturbance in steep slopes, and that equestrian activity across those slopes.
Well, all I can tell you is it's not been fully decided, but we've been leaning towards the idea that we will not have the trails.
May I ask where exactly we are with two, three, and four? Two looks like it's gonna get drowned, four looks like it's just gonna sit in the bench.
What are the numbers you're referring to?
Two, lot number two, three, and four.
If you look at the yield plan, those are the lots that I questioned, that actually come off of East Mountain Road North.
Not the ones in M?
No, not at all, there's no, there's no proposed density in M in the, in the yield plan. And that's why I said, even if we deduct that, if we start from the applicant's analysis of twenty-seven lots showing, it's still a reasonable number of twenty-four, which is essentially in the realm of either what I've found and the difference with what the applicant has found in the density formula. So you use the density, you're using the yield plan to establish the reasonableness of the density formula, and our finding is that it's, the density formula provides you a reasonable basis to accept that density.
Let me push you, let me push you just one more, because that point four of your discussion is actually the same one I was, wanted to ask one of my questions on. Your statement ends with including lots two, three, and four, which leads me to believe that you have other lots you were thinking of that were very problematic due to environmental constraints. So is it restricted only two, two, three, and four, or did you have other ones that you thought were also, quote, "very problematic due to environmental constraints"?
Those were the most significant to me, I couldn't tell you there's any, any others that clearly are the, right.
I think you said something about the road off East Mountain Road.
Right.
South, but that's, that's an approved lot.
Yeah, that is an approved lot.
That's an approved lot.
That's why I accepted it, right.
Right.
That goes back to a prior application.
Is that the Rodney Weber House?
No.
No, it's the Lyons.
It was Nate Lyons came in here with two lots subdivision.
Lyons, two lot.
Right.
Has there been any discussion of the horse trailer traffic?
That's, that's a?
Well, we've also, we've also commissioned a traffic study, or further traffic study than the one that was originally submitted. Our traffic engineer has met with AKRF, I think it was yesterday, and they've, they've done away with a couple of the things that they agreed were extraneous, and they've focused on, I don't remember the exact number, but I'm gonna guess there were about twelve points, there were about twelve points that AKRF wanted addressed, and that work has been commissioned as of today.
Okay.
Has there been any further meeting with the conservation board?
We did meet with the conservation board a week and a half ago.
Did anything come out of that meeting that we should?
Not, not in particular, they, we presented this plan, this yield sketch, and just brought them up to date. There was a surprising little comment, we expected more, I even brought Mr. Gross along to reinforce me, but we, he didn't have to say too much.
All right, I'm gonna break another spoke in the wheel. Two, three, and four, strike me as, so where are we with those, are they kind of in?
Those are not lots that are being proposed for development, they were only, they are not.
Oh, okay.
This is only established for the purposes of a lot count.
Spoke, put back in the wheel.
Yes.
So, Ron, just, first of all, this memo comes from both you and Graham of AKRF, is that correct?
Correct.
And he has reviewed this, and even though he's not here, he would say this is his, you equally share these, these views.
Right, he provided a much briefer outline of his comments, essentially just the conclusions, which I've built into that end section, didn't provide much discussion on, on review of the lots, that's something I provided just for your benefit.
Good. Second, three, Mr. Chair, the second one is tied to your paragraph entitled Findings. You make a point of describing how this demonstrates a benefit, the conservation subdivision is a benefit, clearly benefits beyond the conventional one, you talk about reduction of impact to steep slopes, and improved protection of onsite water resources, could you just expand upon both of those?
If you look at the yield plan, which represents a conventional layout, there's lots surrounding the pond and the wetlands and encompassing those water resources. The conservation plan proposes protections around all of those resources that don't exist in this conventional plan.
So in the conventional plan, what would happen to the pond, and just, can you just be a little more specific?
That'd be owned by a series of private homeowners.
As opposed to being put into a?
Being held by, right, being held by an HOA and protected.
Understood, okay.
But we would still require protections for it, you know, there would still be wetlands, there would still be?
There would still be the hundred foot, and that's provided on this plan, but the hundred and forty feet that's on the plan wouldn't be there.
And then your steep, the reduction of impact to steep slopes point, can you just explain that piece as well?
Again, there's a variety of, of either house layouts, drive access, or roadways proposed on the yield plan, which provide greater impacts to those resources than exist on a conservation subdivision proposal.
Okay, even though the steep slopes, the actions on the steep slopes would be dictated, would be in place regardless, you wouldn't be able to do anything more in one plan versus the other with steep slopes?
I'm saying, I'm saying you'd do less on the conservation plan, less impacts to steep slopes.
I'm just trying to understand what?
I can tell you why, okay? The regulations regarding steep slopes says that between twenty and thirty-five percent, you can have a residential driveway, and you'll see, the twenty to thirty-five is the yellow, and you'll see a significant number of driveways crossing yellow to get to the buildable areas. And we've been, the conservation plan avoids much of that.
And then my last question, Ron, which is not tied to the yield plan, but it is tied to your memo, in your two paragraphs under conclusions, you bring back topics that we've talked about several times, and I'm, I know we've talked, and I think my, I think the chair is very clear about how we need to have the, the town board gave us clarity about the twenty-two versus twenty-four, so first paragraph's fine, but the second paragraph, you're referring back to your calculation that states that the open spaces for a material chunk of the property was still at seventy-seven percent, not at eighty, is that correct?
That's exactly correct.
Okay, so can we, can we just talk about what the then resolution is for adjudicating whether in fact the applicant's calculation of eighty is correct, or your calculation of seventy-seven is correct, and how we're gonna get resolution?
I can sincerely tell you that our calculation is correct, we've been?
I'm not suggesting math is incorrect, I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna get resolution.
No, the end product, and the whole point of this, including the issue of finalizing the density, is that as the plans get refined, refined, that's gonna be revisited, and the applicant has obligation to provide eighty percent set aside of open space in that district. That's not yet there, and he's gotta determine how that can be satisfied.
Yeah, we, we agreed when we came so close with the twenty-four versus twenty-five, and I think I suggested, but we agreed, Ron and I, that that's a number that has to be calculated when all is said and done. And there may be adjustment, I mean, in our worst-case scenario, it would be maybe giving up a lot, or maybe making the, making the equestrian center smaller. If we do a little more efficient planning as this thing refines, we may make it, but we're pretty close.
He could be closing, he could be reducing lot sizes to easily satisfy that. But that all has to be revisited, because at the end of the day, if you're prepared to take an action on the application, we all have to be satisfied.
I'm only bringing up because we keep talking about it, and you thoughtfully keep reminding us about it, so I wanted to keep it on the front burner.
I won't let you forget.
You're not, well done, well done. All right, thank you, sir.
When are we looking at something that we might be calling a complete plat? Because I mean, I know the, I know this.
A complete plat is still quite a ways away, and we're hoping we have a Part Three in for your September meeting, that's a tall order for us, we certainly will have it in for the October meeting. Once you've closed the secret loop, well, part of that process will generate changes in the plat. For instance, traffic engineers have talked about the width of the road in certain places, and we might have to widen it a little bit, or we may be able to narrow it a little bit. There are things that will, will influence the plat, and that will be worked on simultaneously. So we're hoping we get to the point where we have, shortly after we submit Part Three, we'll be submitting a plat for final review. At that point, you have, theoretically, you have to close secret at that point before you can have a public hearing, but that's not the practical way that's usually done. And we get, at that point, if you choose to approve it, we get a resolution with a punch list that we normally get, except I expect it'll be a little bit longer, because this is a bigger subdivision, and we have to address that, getting health department approval, for instance, to come back. So I would say we're still a few months before you have a public hearing.
Easily.
If I may, just, the process as outlined by Glenn is correct in the sense that the secret process provides for the evolution of the project, so that the very review that you did of Part Two, which then requires us now to prepare our Part Three, allows for the fine-tuning of the application as well as the layout. And we know that, as part of Part Three, we know components that are part of this already include the manure management plan, we have a consultant working on that, we have the same thing in terms of an amplified traffic report, which may also require some tweaking as well, but that's all part of the process. So where we're at right now is, and what we're hoping for, is to, is to proceed to Part Three. There was this threshold question of, was there in fact a reasonable basis for there to be a yield plan prepared? We talked it through, we've prepared what we think is a pretty well-developed plan, and I think we've, I think, removed from the table the discussion of whether there is the necessity of going forward with even further analysis with respect to the yield plan. So all we're respectfully requesting is that we can set aside the issue of the differences between the yield plan and the density plan that we've outlined, and then also to move to the preparation of Part Three. So those are the two steps, and Ron certainly can correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Oh, that's exactly it, and it, obviously, that is, the applicant's indicated it's a tall order for them to prepare the significant issues that have to be incorporated in that Part Three and filed with you, that's obviously gonna be subject to significant review, so, you know, there's, it's gotta be at least a few months down the road before you're, you fully understand the impacts of the environmental considerations that you have to consider.
Well, not just the environmental aspects, but the construction, the sewage, the whole, let's call it, I guess I'm anxious to see that all, see a complete, you know, I feel like we're sort of getting there with little mini approvals as we're going along.
Doesn't that require a commencement of engineering and actual layout, topography?
Yeah, as they file this additional information, we'll be getting more and more into the practical details of the design.
And the way, the conservation subdivision's gonna have a homeowners' association, which is a whole other process that gets added into it, the fact that we are going to use centralized sewers, which actually, incidentally, if you didn't notice, it's on both plans, puts us into having, having a different kind of approval from the health department. In one sense, it's easier, because we've tested, we only have to test, all the tests are in the same spot, even though they're a bigger test, but we have the transportation corporation to run the sewer, the sewer, sewage treatment system has to be made, the attorney general has to look on the homeowners' association, so we're a while away, and I would love to come in here with a completed plan and give it to you and just say, go ahead, go and build, but, you know, that's not the way it works.
So what can we expect from you next month?
The best you can expect is that we'll be submitting Part Three for your consideration, with the full EAF, which will be Parts One, which has some corrections from Graham, Part Two, which has some additions from you. which has some additions from you, Part Three, which will be a new thing for you to review. And you may object to some parts of it, which you want, which you want looked at, which you, which you think are inadequate, where we could amplify those if need be. So there's a bit of a process there. And the worst, I think, you'll see is that we'll be, instead of September, we'll be in October.
Okay.
Just this book requirement table. If this whole thing is, if this entire thing is rural conservation, right, why is the minimum required lot area different for the first five lots?
Because that's not in the open space overlay district, and it goes from, it goes from a five-acre density inside the open space overlay to a three-acre density outside.
Just doing my.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the previous, thank you, the previously approved building lot there, what is the intent of that? And forgive me if it's been answered before, but.
What's what?
The Lyons.
Yeah, I know, I didn't hear your question.
What, what is the intent of that? Is that going to be developed, or?
No, the intent is, the intent is over here, that all of that area will not be built.
So the existing driveway that goes to that, that site is going to be closed?
Go to seed.
Okay.
Okay, if you want it blocked off, block it off.
No, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
What the intent is with that.
Yeah, the intent, and I mean, that's, to us, that's one of the biggest selling points, because that establishes an awful lot of the steep slopes is never being built upon, is subject to a conservation easement, and the one thing that we sort of went back and forth about, it increases the practical distance between any potential development and the state park, which was one of the things that was, that was discussed. So that's a big selling point. And it assures, at least from our part of it, a continuation of the connection of the Matrix Forest to the southeast, puts our development towards the edge of it.
Good, thank you.
Glenn, I'm sorry, this question brought up one, which is the, obviously, the yield plan is for demonstration purposes of lot counts, so I'm not questioning anything about where the lots are. I am asking, though, topographically speaking, on this other map you have, you have a significant number of bodies of water that are depicted on it. I assume those are bodies of water. If you go to the pond.
Yeah.
Put your finger to the right.
This?
Yes, and it keeps on going, all those bodies of water.
Yeah, those all the way up.
Right. Well, how come they're not depicted on our master schematic? Because they obviously didn't erode, I mean, evaporate.
Well, they are, they're in here, they're just not.
But they're materially large on your other map, and I'm just trying to understand why the bodies of water, I just.
It's the graphics, they're exactly the same size. Thank you.
The issue really is that the, the map, the map on the left.
Yeah.
The yield plan has highlighted in blue what has been flagged as wetland limits.
Okay.
It's not open water.
That's what I'm trying, I didn't remember, that's what I'm asking, because I don't recall seeing large bodies of water going to the southeast.
I think during, during all the sidewalks, we've all seen the streams coming down the hillside.
Right, okay, so you just, you just showed the wetlands border around that, is that, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And is that the same thing for the pond, or is the wetland border for the pond different? Because the pond looks the same size.
The pond is the same size. What we, basically, all, all, what we did with this is we broke the analysis down into the two regulatory stages, the over 35, which is the brown, and between 20 and 35, which is the yellow. And, and the other restricted, the other restrictions are the water. So we just colored all the water blue and established our distance away from it.
Any action on our part?
No.
So we have no other questions? Oh, entertain a motion to adjourn? Second? Oh. Hold on, just hold on, I didn't, we didn't call for a vote, yes. Sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that based on this conversation, we could put, address the question of the density, and I don't know if it's fair for me to ask that the board makes a motion to, to address that, so we can go forward with Part III, mainly because Part III had, like, the impact that our calculation, our four lots, would have versus the other estimates of density that other parties had, like, there was this number bounds around of 15 lots versus 25. So the impact that 15 lots would have versus 25 lots is very different, which would be addressed in Part III. So if, yes, so that's my question. Is it fair for us to ask the board to say, "Well, this is what we think, that the process that you guys have gone through to, to address the calculation is, is right, and we can go ahead with Part III and just make it official in a way"?
If the chair would allow me to speak to that.
Go ahead, I was going to ask you.
As we've said numerous times tonight, the purpose of the yield plan is merely to validate lot count. The applicant desires to utilize the density formula. That's been subject to significant review on both sides, and I, and I think tonight the board is in agreement with the findings of AKRF at my office that suggest that based on the yield plan presented, the density formula that's been used up to date provides a reasonable, a reasonable number of lots for the project. Now, having said that, there is the issue that my calculations have determined that the lot count could be as low as 22. The applicant has proposed that it may be as high as 25. Certainly, I think the board can support that statement, that a lot count of between 22 and 25, based on the density formula established by the ordinance, is a reasonable number for the project.
Put it another way, I think, we can put this to bed, I guess, the question is this, knowing what your code says and knowing what we did by way of the submission, we just want to make sure that at this point in time, we're, we're past the threshold of having to do a yield plan with the full engineering, which would be something that is not required because there is no reasonable basis for that. So I just want to make sure that we have that clarity. And I don't mean to be misspeaking here, I think that's essentially what we're saying by way of compliance with the code. And that is important to us because, of course, we're now proceeding to Part III, and that is sort of a threshold issue to be addressed.
Do you think your statement. You also do not believe further technical engineering studies are necessary to establish lot count?
That's correct. That came directly from AKRF.
Okay. Are you okay? You look, you're a little.
I'm okay, I just want to make sure that.
No, I mean, the way you were sitting down, I was a little worried about you. You're old guys, you know.
No, I guess what, what our client is asking is he just wants to make sure that that statement and recommendation and observation that's been made by your professionals.
Right.
Is something that the planning board is in accordance with, so that we now can proceed to prepare.
Okay.
Part III.
I believe so.
With that as the understanding. Thank you, that's all I just.
So we're talking 22 to 25 at this point, is that correct? We're not talking 27 and 24?
Right. Great.
And just to be really clear, so there are existing buildings. There are existing buildings, right? And I'm not entirely sure that we have laid out which of those buildings are going to count as part of these 22 to 25 lots. So I think that still remains to be.
That's, that's correct. That's a separate technical question. And again, we're still going back to the issue of lot count.
That's right. Inclusive.
Right, it is, it is.
Inclusive of existing buildings.
Right, that's correct.
And is this, just one more clear thing, is this 22 to 25 dependent upon the town adding, changing the zoning for the manufacturing district?
The count of 22 that I determined from their density mapping excludes the M-zone.
Right.
That was my original basis. If it's determined that it may be included in lot count, then it would go to 24.
We agree there's two, there's two units come out of the.
M-zone.
M-zone. So we would be talking about 23 or 22 as opposed to 24 or 25.
Just wanted to make sure we understand what we're talking about.
Further discussion? Anyone?
Give a motion to adjourn.
We do have a motion awaiting a vote to adjourn.
Aye.
All in favor, aye, thank you.